This conference will now be recorded.
So we're waiting a minute for Roger.
Yeah.
So what I was trying to say is, if we're saying the 50,000 for the lease, and just whatever that number is, is the total amount, and we're saying, okay, we're going to break that up into 12 monthly payments, then the monthly payments we're giving them actually includes the money for the capital projects. If we want to only give them the money for the capital projects when they submit a bill, then the amount we're delivering in the monthly rent has to be less than 50 divided by 12. Otherwise, the only pool, otherwise the only pool we have for the capital improvements is the 90s currently sitting in their account.
That's right, but we would want, we would want, we have the 90 warrants sitting there, but if they came to us and said, well, we need additional dollars because we do this, want to do this, then the town would vote on it.
As a separate article?
As a separate article one.
But I think that when Sean was talking to me about it the other day, he's like, it's not that big an increase because you guys were already giving us 47, because in his mind, that 50, or in his mind, 63, but that's another matter. In his mind, that 50 includes this year's capital improvement installment.
Yeah, but we're getting a little bit off here, but it'll be educational. Two is, they have put so many numbers out there, nobody has a concept of what it is.
I have not.
And I got it in written documents, and their tax return on 2022 said it was $44,700 or some.
What was?
You know, on that tax.
What was the 50,000?
That was for keeping the building running.
I see, okay.
Their expenses for the building was $44,000.
So the 50 pretty much just covers that, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't know what it covers. I had an email that said 35 to 50. We started at 120, we were down to 80. Sean told him 65 the other day, and it's like, start forwarding financial management.
So I have a question for you, Chris.
We have prevailing, it's prevailing.
Right, the first question is the prevailing wage thing. I just want to be sure that if we went with a plan where we're paying them rent to, I'll say, for utilities and the rental of the space, and we're holding the capital improvement monies here, and they are submitting, going forward with an agreed upon project and submitting bills to be paid towards that capital improvement project, and we are then dispersing the approved capital expenses money toward that project, that we are not going to get slammed for failing to do prevailing wage?
Well, I mean, I think the more control you have over that process for them, I mean, the more likelihood there is, like, if there were a complaint about it, that they might find that prevailing wage needs to apply to the work. You know, ultimately, like.
Right, and that's my concern.
Yeah.
And that's part of why I sort of feel like ironically, delivering them the money as a chunk is almost a safer thing for us from prevailing wage standpoint. It has big drawbacks, I don't doubt that, and I'm not disputing it. This one issue, that's the only, like, if we just, if we set the rent at, again, I'm making this up, let's say, if we set the rent at 80, 50 to keep the lights on, and 30 for capital projects, and we pay them that, then the money's in their pocket, and they have to use it. The problem is historically, they haven't been great about delivering exactly how things were done, or documenting that, or what it was used for. So it makes it hard for us, as guarantees of that money for the public good, to be clear about how the money was spent, right? So there's this tension between keeping control of it till we get the bill and trusting them to do it, all valid. But I don't want us to, to end up, like, trying to fix one problem and to create another. So how do we, how do we navigate that line, protect ourselves from the prevailing wage issue, but also able to guarantee that the money's being used for its intended purpose?
Yeah. Is that a question to me, or just?
Yes, how do we do this?
Yeah, and I, I think Frank and I have, we've probably talked through three or four different scenarios with them to try to approach about that. You know, I mean, there are, you know, you could kind of break down, like, the rental payments, but, I'm sorry, I'm just hearing background noise.
It's the fire truck. We may be getting a visit from the fire chief this very minute.
Yeah, and, well, that's great, because your owl camera or whatever is pointing right at the fire extinguisher for me, so.
Maybe we should turn it around?
Yeah, there's like, I mean, there's like a broader view of the whole room, I can see like a panoramic.
Yeah, it's. They turn around.
I can hear you, though, so that's important.
Okay.
You know, like you said, like, like a, breaking down, like, the rental payments, that there's a component that's, you know, this is for the operating expense for the building, this is for capital improvements to the building, requiring them to commit to a schedule of projects, you know, so that you know, like, what's supposed to happen each year, and then having something in the lease so that, you know, if a project does not get done, like, what happens to the money in the rent? Like, we can't just spend on something else. Like, there's commission, there's a commitment from them that specifically going towards these capital improvements. So.
And I think one problem we're going to run into, I'm just projecting this based on some knowledge, is if they give us a list of, say, three capital projects, if the money isn't sufficient a priori to just, we already have 90, right? But let's say the project cost from project one for the floor is going to be one, I'm making it up, 110, and there's only 90. It's not like you can do half, you can't just rip up the floor and leave it that way, because you can't complete the completion of the project, right?
Right, so you needed to go back to town. Sorry, go ahead.
You don't have to go back to town, either, or they have to wait to do the project till they collect enough that they can do it, right? I mean, that's the other option.
Yeah, and I mean, everything they give you, obviously, you know, there's some, there's an estimate, and it may not prove to be the right amount of money, right? So I think, you know, sometimes it could be less, but with construction these days, most of the time, it's probably going to end up being more, just because of the way that costs are escalating, right? So, yeah, there's going to have to be some, some flexibility in terms of the rental payments, in terms of, you know, if a capital project that we've agreed that we're going to be as part of the rent costs more, that we commit to go back to the core funding.
Um, okay. And I, I think what they're going to say is, we still have it, we're waiting till we have enough to do the next piece of the project, but.
I mean, that's the thing about it, in the negotiations with them, they first said they'd only do the April of the which is 15 to 20,000, so they weren't worried about more capital in the upcoming financial year. And then Sean said, well, I've been talking to someone about the floor, but he's never provided a number.
Right.
So I, I, you know, I'm a little, I don't know where to go with these guys, because it's a different story, other different page, so. But, you know, the question is, you know, Chris, we had talked about, you know, you have a warrant separate, you have in the contract, you know, you're going to do these X improvements, and then when they do the work, complete the work, we give them, we give them a reimbursement check. Is that still an option or not an option?
I mean, that is, it's just, I thought that we had, we had talked about was that from a, from their own funding standpoint, they would not have the cash flow to do that.
Right, right, well, you know, I don't have a problem if some, the contract would work when you have the final invoice. You know, usually you have 30 days to pay an invoice.
Yeah.
So, you know, you know, I, I think we can work around language to do that, knowing about their cash flow.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just concerned, like, you know, from a municipal finance perspective, right? You generally don't want to pay for things before you get what you're paying for.
Right, right, I think, you know, that when you, I'm sure we could work out something with the payment, you know, you know, that.
For the existing monies.
Yeah, for the existing money, I think we could work out something. You can tell the vendor, you know, look, they're in the construction business, they'll tell the guy, you're finishing up, let's get me an invoice so I can get you paid. I mean, he prints it out, and he walks it down here, he gives it to Roger, and Roger will write to me now who Eric and Sarah, and you give the check.
I mean, I'm less concerned about the, maybe I shouldn't be, but I'm less concerned about the existing monies that we already put aside for this purpose than I am about what's going to happen with the pool of monies going forward, because, so what I was hearing the other day from the fire chief is that their view of the rental money is that, what they'd like to see is that that number included both, you know, operational monies and the capital pool.
Yeah, but I, I just don't agree with that, because the town needs to vote on it. I mean, it's, to me, it's a no deal.
I get that.
We don't do that with the Department of Works, we don't do that with the police force, it's a no deal. It's like, you know, if you look at their last proposal, in year three, it'd be a 778% increase over what they're paying now.
I get it.
And there's a lot, there are town people that don't agree with everything they want to do with it. And I, you know, I don't, I don't know enough about it.
And I'm, I'm not disputing, I'm just putting out there what the things are, and I see, I see all the downsides.
I'm sure.
Right, so the, I have a weird question. To your knowledge, if we were in a city or in a more urban area, and the town wanted to lease space from somebody to house its trucks or whatever, maybe they couldn't, they didn't have any property that they owned where they could build something. How would that work? If you, you would be paying them a commercial lease rate, probably, right?
Yeah, you would, you know, and I think if, if the landlord, you know, if the landlord needed to make some improvements to the property, it would reflect that in the rental rate they gave.
We did that.
Needham did that.
Needham's done that, did that with the police department for a little while, and.
As a short term solution while you're, like, building a new place or something?
Yeah, I think it may have actually been the fire department, because they did some, they did some work on the fire department. So, yeah, you just pay whatever the commercial rate is, and a lot of times, like, you know, they may have, they may have done some fixing up, you know, the people who, I think they may have done a little bit, but I don't think they charged us for it, because it was more like, it's kind of like, if there's a piece of property that says, like, we'll build a suit.
Right.
They're not, they're not going to charge you the bill, they're doing the bill themselves.
Unless you're, like, you know, if we were garaging a bunch of vehicles, I mean, that's not a fire department, but if you were just garaging a bunch of vehicles, and it was just a big hanger building, you'd just be paying for that unless the roof got torn out by a storm. Okay, I'm just trying to feel out different options to, to have the best command. The issue of prevailing wage is the one that weighs most heavily on me, but it sounds, I mean, and we might be vulnerable, right? If we're paying that bill, we might be, at the same time.
We're not paying, we're paying the moderate fire company.
We're issuing the payment to the fire company, but it's not a hard money to follow, Frank.
The key thing is, like, that the, the fire company would be contracting with the vendor, they would be directing and controlling your construction, not the town.
Yeah, right.
Doing anything, or just, they're just getting reimbursement for us, but it's done. If we're satisfied that the work was done, then we reimburse them. So it's, um, it's a, I just keep hearing the, the fire. I wanted to make sure it's not you guys asking questions, so. Yeah, so, you know, it's, it's really about the degree of control of the tonic. You know, and I, and I think that we are able, I think, through a mechanism like that, to minimize the likelihood that there would be a prevailing wage issue.
That's right.
No, I mean, I, yeah. I, you know, I've been looking at it for six months. I'm not, you know, in a whole lease payment thing, I just don't know what to tell you about it, because there's so many different numbers, so many of them are doctrine of it, so.
It's not, to me, right, this minute, I wasn't even trying to talk about the numbers, I was talking about concepts.
Well, I think, yeah, two times.
The lease just covers utilities, the use covers utilities, and, you know, the insurance is the operating cost of the building versus the lease covers operating cost of the building plus capital expenditures.
I mean.
Those really seem like the, the two issues.
Like what you're saying, you either incorporate the capital expense into the lease agreement, which I've always stayed in my opinion about it, or you continue to do it through warrants, which I, I think everybody votes on. I mean, I just think you're setting it up, why, why, they're in fire department, it's the police department, it's the Department of Highway to Work.
But it's, but it's the fire company.
I know, but it's still, if they had a lease, if the, if the Department of Works was leasing equipment or doing stuff like this, it's no different, you know? It's, and the dollar numbers they throw around are huge.
I guess, I guess I see it, because if they want to run it like a business, and whatever, whatever numbers they want to do, they, like, if you, if you were renting an apartment, right? And, you know, if you were renting an apartment in a house, and the landlord wanted to put on a new roof.
He's going to raise your rent.
He's going to raise your rent, but they know what that rent is ahead of time, and that rent is never going to go down. And so that, that's kind of the same, so I'm sort of mixed it, because I understand what you're saying, but it's the same thing. It's like, if they were to say, we have $400,000 worth of stuff,
Yeah, but.
and we're going to raise, we're going to raise the rent, you know, we're going to raise the lease to $100,000, because that's going to cover the payments for the $400,000 for the next 10 years, that $100,000 is never going to go down.
Well, I think that's, it's hard to go back, but the other thing is, you know, it's a nonprofit. Do they pay property tax on that? I don't think so.
I don't think, I'd have to look and see if they have.
I bet you.
They may have an exemption on it.
Yeah, I bet you they have an exemption, so if they give me a commercial rate, can I give them a commercial tax bill?
I mean, you know, they weren't able to.
But I'm just going to point out, there, there is option two, it's not a commercial rate, like I was saying before.
I know, I know that, but I mean, you know.
We're just trying to figure out how to structure it, and whether it's a reasonable ask, and if the commercial, I don't know what, that's why I said earlier, I don't know what commercial rates are, but if the commercial rate is $10 a square foot, and they're asking for a dollar a square foot, we're really, they're really not doing it for profit, right? Like.
Yeah, if you look at their, look at the LLC papers that I sent you.
Yeah, it's all zeros.
It's all zero?
Yeah.
And two, the thing was, it was, you know, his grandfather set it up to be, you know, for the safety and security of Panama Moret.
Right.
The other option is maybe we take over the building, the property.
Or, like, I, I think there's so many unknowns about where that's going, and let's point out that if we did do that, everything that was $100,000 would be like $250,000, because prevailing wage is really high.
I know, but the, the truth is, if you go through their capital list, they're going to get to it, and they'll get to an end, you know, it's new, you know.
Assuming no new projects get added to the budget.
Yeah, but I mean, two is, I'm not sure why you would expand the building unless you went to a district, but then that should be a shared cost.
Also, if we go to a district, we're going to, we wouldn't necessarily need to expand the building, except possibly for an ambulance bay, because the only way to do a district in this spread out region is to have other satellite houses. So you don't necessarily increase the size of your central firehouse, because response time is the bottom line, and that doesn't do any good if your response time is an hour to get to something, right?
So, Chris, why we have you, I don't know.
Sure.
What do you, Susan, what are your thoughts?
Well, the other thing is, I mean, whatever we do, we need to offer them a lease of some kind, but I, it has to be possible to produce a legally decent lease that's less than three pages, or, or three pages or less. Like, a 13 or 14 page lease is, I just don't think it's okay. Like, not even, one of the townspeople can't even read that lease and figure out what it means. I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm a scientist, like, I'm not a stupid person, but those lease, 13 pages a lease, if I get to page five and I want to start hitting somebody.
Yep, and again, that's not the lease that would be presented. It's what Frank had asked me for was, do you guys have a typical lease when you are renting from private property, and that's what I gave him. You know, obviously, a lot of the lease doesn't apply, so, you know, yeah, it's going to be a lot shorter. Can I guarantee it's three pages? I'm a lawyer, like, you know.
Oh, um, I guess that, that really, it's just, I just know everybody involved, and the shorter it is, the better it is, as long as it covers the bases. I don't know that we have any other, I think the rest of the questions.
I mean, internally, the three of us.
Are just us, yeah.
That need to discuss, which is.
All right, well.
Thank you, Doug. Okay.
All right.
All right, Chris, thank you very much.
All right, take care, nice to meet you all, at least in, in the virtual.
All right, thank you. I, I'm not sure where to go.
So, okay, the first thing I'm going to say is that my, I don't know if you had this in impression in your conversation, but my impression of the conversation from Sean is that in his head, the lease numbers includes, includes the capital piece. I, I'm not saying it should, I'm saying that's how he's viewing it.
Okay, I think, well, you know what we need to do moving forward? When he brings it up, we need to cut him off and say, you need to talk to Roger, Susan, and Frank at the same time, because we get different stories all around, almost, you can go.
But I think the conversation keeps flowing, and that's why.
Yeah, but, no, he's got to come in and talk. He, it's, it's just, it's frustrating as hell, you know, about it, you know, set up a meeting, tell us when you can meet, I've told him I'd meet him anywhere, anytime, but, you know, it's nothing, well, Kevin's doing it, talk to Kevin, Kevin goes, I'll reach out to him, I haven't heard from him. You know, and then he comes in and talks to you, talks to him, you know.
It sort of sounds to me like Kevin has stepped back from talking.
Well, he didn't, when Kevin, I talked to Kevin, you know, when I got back, you know, I don't know when Kevin got back from his mother, his mother is dying. He says, I have not heard from Sean Adele, I'll reach out to him, and I'll give you a call.
And according, I, I spoke to him today, and apparently, like, it doesn't seem like they're continuing to talk. That was my impression, he didn't strata, he said, I haven't heard from Sean recently, since I wrote that letter, I'm like, okay, well.
It's that email, it's that email that has this proposal on it.
Okay, so.
I have a.
So where do we go?
I think we need everybody in the room at the same time, you can't have 15 separate, you know.
But here's what I'm going to put out there, we need to have, we need to craft a coherent plan, or even part of Plan A and Plan B, whatever those are, so that when we sit down, we can say, okay, look, here's what we came up with, here's Plan A, here's Plan B. Pick one, and tell us, then let's start, like, which, which one works better for you, and what do you need us to change to get there? So we're not just talking in the air and coming up with a different plan, because at least there's something.
This is the, this was on 3/12.
So, yeah, it's not, like, super recent.
No, but I got to remember, I was in Maine for two weeks. You know, this is what, and this was their proposal on the bottom.
And the, the bottom one was a counter proposal?
No, this is what the cabinet did.
And what's this?
This is the financials, what they, all the, this is what they're talking about, and this would be the percentage of the increases. You're talking about year three, they won 100.
I know. But that's what I'm saying, is that number, that number is a number that, in their mind, includes capital. That's what it is, that's why it's this high. And I'm not debating that we should take it out of there.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, they're raising that number because it's got the capital.
I know they are, but that's $100,000 a year.
I'm aware, and there's, like, that, you know where that's coming from, because if we're saying, don't take out a loan, then they have to have the cash.
Yeah, but you, you still got to let the town vote on it.
No question.
I mean, I mean, I have a question, do we agree that the town should vote on capital improvements?
I think you and I certainly do, and, and I think that that's always been the way it's been. And remember, from their perspective, and by the way, I just agreed with you, remember that, but from their perspective, the reason there's a fire company with a firehouse, do you remember what the reason is?
Well, because someone's barn burned down.
No, the new fire truck did not fit in the old firehouse.
The one up there called?
Yes, and when the fire chief went to the select and said, we need a new firehouse because the fire truck doesn't fit in the firehouse, he said, no fucking way, I'm not building you a new firehouse, get a smaller truck. So Ray said.
Yeah, I, I, I don't dispute, I don't dispute that, but that had to be like 1977, because the firehouse was completed in 1980, that's 43 years old.
But you're missing the point, the point is, the reason that building exists
I know why it is.
is because the town refused to even put it on the warrant and wouldn't pay for the capital expenditure, so they built it separately.
Forty-six years.
I know.
Forty-four years ago, god damn.
But that's the, like.
I was in high school. I think maybe late junior high. I might have been, no, I was just finishing up elementary school.
But that's how they're.
Make sure that gets in the notes.
It was being recorded.
I don't care, you know.
I know.
I have, I, you know, I don't deny it, I'm frustrated, I don't know what to do, because I had a great meeting with Sean, you know, and, you know, I, I could get a people, I don't think, if we had everybody in the room and we were reasonable, you know, I don't think it would take that long myself.
So I, I'm going to look at what our part of this is, so, anyway, what I'm trying to say is, it seems like the difference between this and this is that they're trying to get all the capital into the rental payment, so it's like, for lack of a better word, one and done. And we're saying, from the standpoint of the town, we're not comfortable with that. We understand why you want it, we understand why it's easier. But at the end of the day, if the town people, if the taxpayers are paying for the capital improvements, they have a right to know what it's being spent on and to vote on those issues separately.
Can I just say one other thing?
Sure.
Two is, if you go by the numbers they give there, they could be accumulating that number, it's $100,000 more in the third year, we may have a financial need, and they're sitting on this money that we could be used to put to something else. You know, that even Don Coburn, I forwarded him, he goes, you can't give them the capital money like this, promising you then three years out, you don't do that for any other department. And I don't think Don has a lot, likes me, you know, we've had a lot of disputes, but he was right.
Yeah, it's not about, it's.
But I, I might get them in a room and just talk about it, too, is, they talked about doing things that don't get done.
That's not a loss.
I, I, I think that if you offered the, the rent, the lease that they're talking about.
I don't know what the lease they want.
Well, on, on this note, the 63, because that's kind of where, in my conversations with Sean, it's sort of been around there, I've asked him straight out, 61 for you guys, 60, because, and he's like, yeah, that would work. And then, the current $90,000 for them to do whatever little capital stuff they can do with $90,000.
But there has to be agreement on what the work is.
Yeah, I understand, and we've, we've already got that list, they gave us that list, right? And I think if we say, well, here's this $90,000 this year, we'd like to see, you know, the town, we'd like to see this.
There's some very obvious things, the flooring and.
And then, and then, you know, you could do one year options to renew, but make no agreement on what those, what those renewal options are going to be, because, because you're both, because Susan's right, I think they are looking, and I, you know, I understand why they are looking to get the capital included in there, because once it's in the operating budget, it's in the operating budget, you don't have to come in, you don't have to go to town.
I just, fundamentally, that just sucks me off, my frustration goes up. You know, well, why doesn't, you know, why don't we give 250,000 to Department of Works and they can buy a truck every year, you know, we'll just take a bad face out of you, you know? You can't do that, and two is, I want to work with them, you know, and I did think, we talked at the meeting the other night, we want it to be a partnership, but there's got to be some, you know, some transparency.
And I, I think that if we, if, and I know it's a big, it's a big step from what we're paying.
You know, if you say that, you know. You know, if you say, you know, I'm not going to cry over a spill of milk of ten thousand dollars if we rounded it up to sixty for this year. I'm just not going to do, I'm not, you know, I, 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 you know, you were there, Roger, when I said to them, I don't want to make your budget so tight you don't get shit done.
Yeah.
Because there's things that hasn't been done. And I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem, but if I was to agree to contract like that, I'm going to see real numbers, what that place cost them to run.
Yeah.
Two is, and I don't know how to deal with this, and Chris told me, good man, you don't open up that, you know, I don't agree, there's a fundamental we agree about soliciting for donations. They got over thirty-some thousand in the articles.
That letter he sent you spelled all of that out.
What, who?
Back in the tenth, Kevin, you gave it to us, but I couldn't find it, Kevin, we sent it. Because right, right, this is the one, and it even says additional considerations, annual funding, financial record-keeping, fundraising, stake growths, annual holiday card, undertake targeted outreach to select potential donors, pursue grant opportunities, and launch future capital campaigns.
Right, well, I know they said.
So they're willing to sell.
Yeah, but, yeah, but how does that play in their rent? I mean, you know, they, okay, I'm not, you know, they raised X amount.
I think the answer is, if we're paying the operating expenses, that would be money. Like, if it were me, I'd say that goes to the capital fund.
Well, I know, but.
And they put out, you know, the United Way thing, they put that sucker out there, and here's our core, here's where we are.
Here we offered, he said, give me ten percent of everything I collect, and I'm going to do it. Well, if I back and look at that tax thing that I sent you, in Go Republic, in years past, they were raising fifty to a hundred grand.
It, it all comes.
But, you know, Chris told me, don't touch it with a ten-foot pole, because you can't tell a nonprofit what to do with their money.
Just Chris.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. He said, don't touch it with a ten-foot pole. Well, we, we have to have, you know, we have to have, you know, we can lay out their tax returns, and they have to make them public. I don't want to give them this.
We can't tell them what to do with the money. At the end of the day, though, what we can say, what, what I would assume is that if we're agreeing to pay for their operating expenses, which personally, I think we should.
Oh, I agree.
No, I know, I'm not saying you disagree, I'm just making sure I'm clear. If we're paying for their operating expenses, and they're doing fundraising on top of that, and they're also coming to us with capital needs, that fundraising is part of the capital needs, because the pocket is deep and, like, the, the need is large. A hundred thousand dollars for a project right now, you can barely put footsteps on your porch for a hundred thousand dollars. That's ridiculous.
Yeah, but if you, you know, I don't dispute that, but, but if you, we sat in on some of the meetings, and there were people that were in part of the fire companies that said, we don't want to do fundraising.
I know, they don't want to do it.
But, but we still suggest.
But that doesn't mean they don't have to do it.
But if they're willing to put it in there.
If they're willing to put it in the lease.
Yeah, but I, I'm still waiting, you know, there.
Where's the beef?
Well, where's the transparency? I mean, you know?
Right, so one of the things, like, he is saying that he wants to use part of the money to hire administrative aid, I don't, like, which I think is a good idea.
But tell me what it's done by.
But at the end of the, and we can say, at the end of the year, we need to see financial accounting, or there's going to be issues.
I tell you what, I would willing to go to sixty grand a year, and they provide transparency to us. But if it doesn't, if we don't have that transparency, which has to be defined, then it goes back to the old rent payment of fourteen seventy. It's a contract negotiation.
And I'm totally fine with that, as long as we're really clear about what we mean by financial. Because I, I want to hold them accountable, but that means I want it spelled out.
I know, but you know, too, now, you know, with Roger here, I offered, like, the, you know, for the fire department, I'll put their spreadsheets in there, and we'll have good data on what they're doing maintenance and stuff like that. It's all about data, and it's not, I'm not trying to say, I'm not trying to say, I'm not going to be telling them, no, you need to spend less or anything like that. If this is what you're spending, let's have it, and we understand it. You know, I just, but we need to get them in a room.
Hang on, I'm just, I wanted, I think we've established, we're not comfortable putting capital costs into.
An operating budget.
Rental.
Agreement.
Agreement, or rental, you know, rental costs. Because we don't do it for, because the town has always put capital expenditures as separate articles to vote on.
Well, that's one part. Two is, you can't make a multiple-year lease where you make that huge financial commitment, where money could be sitting up the street and we're bleeding down here.
That's what I think, if we.
That's okay. I just want to make sure I get it down, right? And I want it to be clear and accurate.
So I think if we, if, if they're offered the, what you're talking about, like the sixty thousand dollars or the sixty-three six, whatever, whether there's some stipulations on that based for accountability of budget. And then, the ninety thousand dollars, we look at what they can use that for this year. And then we just make a, we agree to come together in October or the next whatever.
Well, that's what we talked in the meeting, was get together in October.
Yeah, because I think what, I think that that's, that's where we, if, if the select board and the finance committee is willing to support, you know, the whole idea of, of capital as a separate item, then we have to come to agreement, you know, sometime in October with the fire company, what that capital is. And then, if we're, if both boards are in agreement, then that's what has to be sort of argued for at the annual town meeting, and in any sort of conversations that move forward. And I think that's what, and I think that is sort of like, historically, going back to forty years ago, forty-six years ago, what Sean sort of sees is he wants to make sure that if going forward, there's an agreement that says, oh, yeah, it's October, you know, or we're, we're standing, that not only is the, the fire department standing behind it, but also the select board and the finance committee standing behind, you know, going to, you know, going to the annual town meeting next year and saying, we feel that it's really important, we put this warrant on the article, we've had conversations about it, that we're going to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital warrant article, and, because X, Y, and Z, and this is what, we've, we've spoken to them, we've had three meetings with them, we had an open hearing, we could even have an open hearing, there are two or whatever, one and a half about that, so that at the end of the day, walking into the annual town meeting, they feel comfortable after a conversation that that they're going to get their hundred and fifty thousand dollars on.
Roger mentions, but Susan, we have, the committee agreed that we would have a cover letter on the lease about a new partnership and about transparency.
Yeah.
And that we acknowledged that the fire company needs help, and that, you know, this was going to be, we're going to be transparent, this is what their cost was, everything we saw in those negotiations in January and February were estimates. You know, Sean was very honest with me. He said that, yeah, you know, I do the bills, it's not a lot of bills, you know, but I haven't kept up with what these guys have been talking about. He sat in a couple of meetings, probably three out of the four meetings. So, you know, but how do we get them, what, what are they going to do to show that they're taking that step?
Well, I guess I can, in, in a way, you know, I think that we could, you know, I could help as much as possible.
I could do, we could have, you know, fire department, Jeff Zimmerman offered, he threw his spreadsheets, and he needs help tracking his costs at the firehouse, he said he'll do that. There's another guy that's retired here, you're going, I don't want to mention his name, I know that he's helped us with the, with the pantry stuff, he would probably, I could go to him, there's a lot of options out there. You know, we encouraged him in the meeting, he had actually talked about getting a couple of citizens and someone that could help with the fundraising.
And I think, and that's what Kevin had always talked about, he called like a prudential committee or something.
Yeah, yeah, that they would have, you know.
I think it's even in that.
Yeah, yeah, they, they would have that, you know, they, they would find people that, you know, have expertise in something, you know, spreadsheets, financial analysis, stuff like that, fundraising or advertising, you know, some of that marketing is all. Skill set.
I mean, this just seems like it ought to be worked out.
No, I don't think you can get them in a room.
I think you can't, I, I think you can't, I, I really believe that if, if we offer them.
I, I think with the three of us need to meet with them, it drives me nuts, you have separate conversations.
No, I know, it's difficult to get clarity.
Yeah, but he's going to.
At the end of the day, though, I think we're really clear, the capital projects can be voted on. And that, because we don't do it for anybody else. It's not, we're not selling them out, we don't do it for anyone.
Well, you don't do it for anybody else, we, you know, because this kind of, I'm just out there working, the finance.
And the other thing is, like, let's, the reason they get so good is because the reality is thirty K a year isn't going to add up to the project. But that means, let's be honest about it. If you got, if you could do the floor for a hundred and twelve thousand and eighty dollars, then let's put that number on the warrant and get that done.
But we're relying on their statistics, you know?
Right.
And two is, somebody, you know, this is the cost, and then you'd see two being played or changed, I just don't know. I don't know, you know, I don't want to sit there and sound negative and stuff, I'm like, okay, you know?
And I'm, clearly, if we got a bid today to do a project that wasn't going to be on the warrant till FY twenty-six, it wouldn't be any good, right? Obviously, at least, who knows? Because it only takes one thing to happen, that one price of one item goes through or whatever. I, I get that. And that said, at the end of the day, if he knows that Project X is on the slate and that we're doing the warrant by April one, I'm going to say, then January one, he has to reach out to the contract, to three contractors, and get numbers, and say, boom, here's a pile of three bids.
I, I know.
And, you know, we need to make a call about what's going to be on the warrant to get that project done. The one other piece I think is out there in, in his head, I think, but now I have to feel two different ways about it, is historic, right, just a couple of years ago, they had a pool of money that was set aside to do the railing project. And when the railing got done under that budget, the finance committee refused to give them the rest of that money for capital projects, because that, that pool of money was only for that project.
But, but the other thing, I understand his concern, you know, because I'm not, you know, that's what he's experienced.
But also, it's a different people every time.
Yeah, but, but Chris said.
Right, this Chris.
Chris.
There's more than one Chris, that's why I get clarity. Right, right.
He says the select board has the final decision, how that matters.
Not the finance committee. Right, okay.
Okay, so, you know.
Right.
Um, you know, I understand some of the things Eileen said the other night, some of the things I don't agree with. I'm not, I don't want to be controversial.
No, 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 I don't, I don't agree with everything she says.
But, so it would be, you know, the select board would be making that decision. But that was, we talked about that in our meetings in January and February. This is why we would have the cover letter that would go to the letter. This is not just a one-off, this is an investment in public safety. It's a forty-six-year-old building, it had one addition to it, and it, you know, that, it's not, it's just not one-off. You know, it's not, here's one check and then we go away.
And I think there's one other piece we could offer, which is that even when we're saying on the warrant that we could, we could word it like, for improvements to the floor and other projects, and.
Other projects that the fire department, the select board.
As, yeah, as mutually agreed upon, right, as mutually agreed upon. Meanwhile, we have that list, and, and it's a hit list, and like, they're prioritized. And that year, the floor is number one, but number two and number three are, I don't know, fix the broken pipe, or whatever they are, right? So that we know that when Project One gets completed, if there's money left over, thank you, God, that money can be applied to the next one on the list, even if we have to wait till the next year's warrant to get the bigger pool of money to complete that project. So, you know, let's say there was a hundred thousand and they spent eighty-two. That other eighteen is waiting, but next year, when we get the full amount.
To me, it'd be like a revolving account.
Except, or, or like the, um, it's a stabilization fund up in a pack.
So, yeah, so capital rolls over, like you said, eighty thousand dollars, much like the thirty thousand dollars, it's been there for three years.
Or ninety.
Or ninety.
Actually, sixty, but the last thirty was depending on getting a contract.
Right, well, technically, there's, there is ninety, even if it's in two piles.
But at ninety, you know, I'm not sure what you can tell with the floor.
Well, I don't think it would, but that's, that's why, that's why I mean that, you know, you could, they had, they had several projects that could have been done under that ninety thousand.
Oh, yeah, they do, they, they talked about doing the apron.
Yeah, the apron, some, some other stuff they have there. And then, again, I think that the floor would be a conversation that would happen.
I could do on the floor, do on the floor, the logistics on doing that floor, it's a nightmare. You got to take, I don't throw it without, you got to take everything off the wall.
The whole room has to be emptied.
It has to be empty.
Absolutely, it's, it's a nightmare project, and one of the reasons I don't like.
Where do you park the trucks? You can't park the trucks in front of the door, because they got to bring the old shit out.
I, I mean, the thing is, if it's a day, you can deal with it, it's, if it's when it's a week that you start.
Well, yeah, but I, yeah, but the problem is, that's not just about tearing up concrete. You tear the concrete up, and then you got to lay the, either the piping in the floor.
And that's one of the reasons I don't.
Worth work.
Right, and one broken pipe.
Well, I will be, they're, no, they got broken pipes, because some of the zones don't work. But it's not like you just go in there with a jackhammer and tear it up and then put it, put the V-haul out.
It's a Baird effect, and that's one of the reasons I don't like that type of heat, but, whatever.
That was pretty progressive.
Oh, no, right? So I'm going to just put out there that I think that that needs to be, we need to write that agreement down. That it's, that it's understood that there's a, a list of projects, that when money is approved at meeting for capital projects, it's understood that for this particular project or other projects as agreed.
Well, that we do, that it would be, you know, the wording would be that the Monterey Fire Company and the select board agree on it.
Right.
That way that we don't, you know, we'll take the opinion of the select board, but it won't be, you know, they don't have a vote.
I mean, and, you know, maybe the select board will thumbs down it, because they think it's a bad idea, and they can be grumpy about it. But at the end of the day, it's public money.
Well, it's public money, but two, I have to think particularly with you and Justin and Roger here, the maturity, but it's different.
It is, it's just, they're not wrong in fearing that it's changed, the changeover every year. You haven't been here as long, and I can definitely say that people who have been part of it for twenty years have seen that there's a, there's constant changeover in both committees. And there's always the learning curve and the opinions and the baggage they bring with them, and it's different every year. And from their perspective, like, we're still here and we're reteaching them every, every year, and I get that. They're not wrong, that is frustrating. But it's a reality.
Yeah, it's, you know, that's the nature of the business. It is, it's just like, you know, when you, in private world, you get a, I want to be different corporate bosses, it's like, you know, what was a priority yesterday is no longer a priority.
It, it's a frustrating reality.
You know?
And it's not like, you know, if it becomes a fire district, he still will be answerable. Because then he, you know, as a fire district, he's going to have to answer a bunch of stuff to the state that's beyond what he's answering now.
Yeah, but two is, we, when, when we meet with him, we need to put that on the table, because if he's talking to Otis, I would like to talk to the select board members of Otis, and, you know, start working it from both angles. You know, you can't come up with a plan, then come drop it on us and say, take it. There should be some dialogue, and just casual conversation, brainstorming stuff, nothing that you sign off on, on the first meeting, you know?
I think he would, he's trying, my impression, and I get this, and especially from having talked now to a bunch of different fire people, that it, it's always a, I'm not going to say ten years, but there's a lot of egos in it.
Well, that, he, he admitted a year or two, eighteen months ago, the problem with it is the ego, dude, it's not, it's not.
Everybody knows this.
Yeah, no, who wants to give up their firehouse?
So I think that trying to work out functional relationships by dipping their toe in the water and trying those things in small ways that are less official, is kind of their way of saying, like, are we going to be able to do this? And you're right, like, there should be more people involved, but I think the idea is that the fewer egos on the table.
I, I know, I know.
The less stupid stories to the boards.
My position, I don't have really, you know, I have a vote, yes, but a stake to learn about it.
Right.
You know, I like the idea of Otis, because they already shared police chief between Becken.
Right.
You know, so they have.
They clearly have that mindset.
They really have that mindset, and, and according to Garrett, it's going good, um, others might have different opinions.
Um.
The opinion of the woman at the bar at the Grau's house is not good.
Oh, and, you know, there might be, it, it might be that we also explore, um, I don't know, a shared fire chief with, with somebody, maybe San Antonio. Because I know that they reach, I, I would thumbs down it, they, they reached out to Brian to see if he would do their gun permits, and I'm like, it's a slippery slope. Right, like, they're relying on, on the state police and they're getting you to do this, and then the next thing you know, and I'm like, I, I either feel like it's all in or nothing, like, either way, or not, that's, that didn't make me comfortable.
Yeah, and they could be nickel and dim as to that.
Exactly.
You know, that, you know, we do this and next week, you wanna be cooperative, but it needs to be, like that agreement between Great Barrington, if you have someone that's on, you know, D W R, D U R, you know, that he'll understand. You know, it's a letter, it's a letter of understanding, you know.
There's clarity on the limits.
There's clarity, you know, there were some things in there that surprised me, you have to put, watch the cell, he's gotta provide someone to do that.
Wait, what?
That letter in Great Barrington.
Watch to sell?
Well, yeah, if you put someone in a cell.
Oh, in a cell, right.
Jail cell, you, you gotta, or buy a guard.
Yes, there's no one in there, oh my God, um, okay, so just.
I like them up in my chicken house.
For the bear, that's awesome.
So, I, I think we need, let me see what I can write up from this about what, like, what our hard limits are and how we think we could structure this, unless you wanna do it, Roger, which I'm totally fine with, because I think, I think you have a clear grasp of it and begun the dialogue with him. I think it would be good if we were all at the table, so there's no game of telephone.
I, I think we need to be at the table.
The, I think the only problem that I foresee is that he's going away next week, he's, he's, has vacation, and, you know, we all leave vacations, we just got back from it.
Well, I mean, to me, I, I never felt like, if we wanna say on Tuesday, like, move it to sixty grand, I don't have a problem doing that, and we'll negotiate it, okay? You know, I, I don't, you know, ten thousand dollars to me is not a deal breaker maker, I'm not gonna sign off something on a contract that I'm not comfortable with, I'm just not gonna give it to them. You know, so I don't have a problem saying, Sean, we put in this amount, when you get back, you owe us a meeting with the three of us in the room, and anybody that wants to come from the finance committee, you know, I, um, and, you know, and then we start talking, and then that gives us a time to prepare a document to say, here, we'll outline our position by the time we get back.
Right, and I, I, I think it is a bridge that can be breached. They're not gonna love that we're not willing to put the capital in there, but I think it is a hard line, and I think we have, like it or not, from the town's perspective, we have, you know, there's a lot of reasons why we have that opinion, and they're pretty solid reasons.
You cannot turn that against public people, that's part of democracy, if you've had that, you're taking away their ability to love that as well.
It, it's, public money is being spent for public purposes.
And it, there's a history.
Yeah, and the, the history notwithstanding, we have to have accountability for that money, we can't just entrust them with a hope, in hope.
Yeah.
We just can't, it's not, we have to do shared responsibility, and I don't think we can do it. Um, if we were, like, if it was a commercial enterprise, it would be a commercial rent, but they're a nonprofit.
I know, I know. I don't know, I'd like to get past this and work on building the relationship in other ways, I mean, the time I spent with him, I learned a lot.
Me too.
I did, I, you know, um, and I know they're dedicated, and I know they work hard, um, I don't know how to fix them in any shortage. They're in that.
So that brings me to the other thing, I just wanted to run by you guys, because the, the compensation piece is making me crazy. The, so the numbers that we were able to pull together for shift work and call work aren't, right? So, the numbers that we're pulling off, the, this, the, that the treasurer provided are pooled in a bizarre way, and some of them are just hard wrong. For instance, it showed, um, Mark Maycock is answering zero calls, so in the like nine months of this fiscal year, which is one hundred percent not true. Right, we don't know why the number's wrong, we think it might be the wrong pull-down menu, or something to do with the, um, what do you call it, the payroll system? But the bottom line is.
The number is wrong.
So making decisions on the basis of that number is a bad idea. Um, and in fact, the shift number was pooled between like overnight shifts and other things, so again, wrong, so we have to get better numbers.
Well, I have a question.
Do you have some numbers that are in my office?
Okay.
That he dropped off that you and I can talk about?
Oh, that would be great, okay.
But, um, well, there's two questions, you know, can we change the payroll system so we get accurate numbers?
Correct numbers.
Well, first of all, you know, we're gonna need that kind of stuff if you go to the district even more. So, we need to fix, we need, I don't, I don't know what.
We think it's the report and not the payroll system for part of it, and we think, Roger.
So, to the payroll, the, the way that I saw that it works is there are, there's one account number that is used to payroll, but there's different categories inside of that account number in the payroll system.
So there's some, right?
So, so, so let's say, for example, there's, there's the account number.
Yeah.
And then, inside of the payroll system, there's different dropdowns that they can select. Fire chief, shift work, call, which are pay categories, which hit that account number. And so, I think that the wrong question might have been asked as to what we wanna report on, but I think the information that I have, uh, that Sean dropped off and we talked about today, um, is a little more accurate than, than that.
Than that, but would you think it might be possible
Yeah.
to get the system to generate a report that would be accurate? It's a question of the correct question being asked, and it may also be a question of whether Mark was correctly entered.
Yeah, but remember, yes, like you, yeah.
Because it could be a little bit.
The other thing is, remember Justin said in the last year, he wasn't doing it anymore because there was, there was some, he wasn't.
I haven't submitted in like four months.
Yeah, he hadn't submitted it because the, the, the whole.
It's so annoying.
There was the whole system, he just, I, I, is he a volunteer?
Yes.
He is? Because I heard him say that the other night, oh, I can't vote for it because of my father, but he didn't say.
He also came up as zero calls.
Yes, as far as I know, he's still up in the company.
Yeah.
As far, as far as they're concerned, as far as, as far as their.
I have a.
Because I have a listing.
Can we, I'll volunteer more time, can we do, like, start reconciling, like, this week, we had six calls, this numbers went out? We got data and started looking at it now instead of waiting for this accounting system, this financial.
Yeah, that's.
Maybe, we would have to get, well, it depends on what you're talking, if you're talking about through our accounting system, you have to look at if you're talking about what they use for software, we'd have to get it from that.
Yeah, but I mean, what I would wanna know on a weekly basis with, or bi-weekly, I'm not sure how.
Along with a bi-weekly.
Yeah, yeah, okay, this is what they said they did, and this is what they said, and not wait till the end of the month.
Yeah, wait till the end of the year.
Yeah, 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 I've never done it before, you know, I, I, I'd be willing to help out there, but that's another thing, we should put a, a agenda list that we wanna talk to, to, uh, Sean about, because we need to talk about the payroll, we need to talk about how we do it timely, you know, because, you know, we might find something quicker than waiting at the end of the month, you know? Because he, you know.
I know, I don't know either, um, what I do know is that, uh, what was the?
Because I can't get, I can't get reports of like the pay, the pay period.
Right.
And all, all it's gonna tell you is what they put in, in any given week.
But that has it listed by names, is that the one that?
Yeah, it's listed by, it lists by name and then by category of what they, of what they, um.
Do we have a good document telling us what that is, the different categories, what the pay should be?
Yes.
I believe it's in, it's, I think it's in that, in that system, it's set up in the system there, I, I don't have a piece of paper that says, this is what, what their pay is for that.
Yeah, we need to start doing.
You mean a total for the individuals?
Yeah, I don't have anything like that, and that's why, that's why I'm thinking that we could get, if we, I would have to talk to Harper's.
Well, there's the issue, part of the issue, because what, what I'm hearing you say is like, you know, Mark goes on there, there's a dropdown menu, there's whatever, one to three options or whatever it is, he's selecting the wrong one. Okay, so what, by doing their audit, you know, Mark reported to a car accident two hours, we could reconcile. Oh, very much quicker, I, 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 I don't mind doing stuff like that. We, we need to get into the weeds so we understand it, because they have a system, and the system we have may not be the best system for a fire department, I don't know.
I think too, what we're seeing from the DBW is that, I, I still suspect that part of the reason it was working was that Melissa was acting as a backstop. That if stuff was turned in and she looked at it and she's like, eh, that's not right, she was fixing it before it got submitted, and the reason, um, that may have been also happening, probably happening at least part of the time with the fire company, and it was never happening with Mark, because Mark would not have been happy with Melissa having anything to do with this payroll submission.
Well, you've seen his emails from a year ago, that the payroll system was totally screwed up and.
And so it may be that the payroll system is problematic, and it was functioning because Melissa was, was fixing the problem.
Some of the fire departments in the library, because they're hours and shifts, it's hard to believe that a system couldn't do it, you know, it's not like.
I, 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 from what I've seen, what I saw, this reported on the fire side, it seems to be working, from what I can tell. I mean, on the fire side, because I was like looking at it.
We could do like one month and four weeks and say it's working, and, you know, you know, you have a hundred shifts or something, you have one mistake, okay, that's one percent, that's, you don't get, you don't go buy a new system or do anything.
Yeah, yep, I, I don't think it.
I think even just two pay periods of making, of monitoring it ought to be enough to make sure it's working.
I think, I think to your point, there may have been, the most, the most specific department with, uh, with, um, highway, she may have been elevated and that sort of stuff.
Because that, and that's the most straightforward department.
It's not, because of the calls. The call-ins, the call-ins is what was messing with it.
Would you say the call, people calling off?
No, 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 when they're called in because of a storm, right, they get a certain, they, they, overtime versus the paid hours thing.
So, from what I understand, when they do the punch-in, it, they, they go in, they punch in, they say it's a call-in, but the way that, that, so they would assume that that would work. But they don't have another option, the, the way that it actually works is you have to actually call that, you have to say that call-in is overtime. And then the calculations work, my understanding is that at the point of their punch-in, all they can do is select call-in, they can't select the fact that it's overtime. So that point was being done in the background, or wasn't being done in the background. So, when, when, when it doesn't know that it's overtime, it does some weird calculation that says, oh, a certain percentage of this automatic three hours is regular time, and a certain percentage is overtime. And so, you have to tell the whole thing, so you have to tell the whole thing is call-in, and I don't know, Susan's point, if that was being double-checked by Melissa before it went out, and she was going in and selecting overtime and fixing it, and it's just been because Melissa hasn't been there, you know, really, I don't know if she was able to do it for the past couple, few pay periods, and it all of a sudden showed up, and then, oh, there's a problem with, with the, the application when before there wasn't. So, I, that's, that's.
It's just that it's a complicated system, and you know what happens with complicated systems.
Yeah, yeah, but that, we had payroll, I had, between union, five unions and one non-union, I had five different pages. Some of them worked a thirty-five hour week, some worked thirty-seven and a half hour week, some of them.
Right.
You know, it's kind of like.
And you had a payroll system that can handle it.
Yeah.
It should be handledable, we're not gonna disagree with you, I'm not, I.
So that's why I said, what I, what I looked at.
But Harper, how does that get set up, does Harper, is it something we go through Sarah or Eric or one of them, that we wanna make these changes to the system?
Uh, that I don't know, because I, I have, I'm trying to get, um, um, some training in with, with them, sort of understand more about that, like, I wanna understand, um, reports and setup in the backend, you know, how, how does, how does a category get set up, it, it all might have to be done through conversations with Harper's.
Yeah, and then they'll set it up, like, if it's a call-in, you know, it's automated.
Reports, I mean, once we know what kind of report we need, we're all together.
Because the report that we got from Harper's, Sarah talked to Harper's about it, and, but it wasn't the right one.
But it wasn't the right one, that, because we didn't really, she didn't really understand what we wanted.
Yeah, but, yeah, should Sarah be the?
But that's the thing is that.
No, she, we were using her because he wasn't in the system.
Yeah, and that, and that's why, when I go in there, there is a place you can do queries, but I'm not quite certain how those queries work at this point in time.
Right, there's probably a, a drawing of how it works.
Yeah.
The warning materials seem black.
Thin, but non-existent.
So, I think that once I can figure that out, and be able to figure out how to query some data, we may be able to query the data, we may be able to pull some stuff out. But it's just, I'm trying to figure out how it works and the right buttons to push, the right things to click into.
So, the, the last piece of this, other than reconciling data so we can actually have a clearer picture of it is, that at the end of the day, we do have a bunch of people, that, so there's like, the, the out-of-towners that are mostly coming in through shifts. We're talking about like, the, the number they used was at approximately two hundred calls, was it, in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, was a seventy-four percent increase of the over five, two hundred calls in a year, that's like, more, like, it's not every night, but it's more than every other night, right? That's a lot of calls.
For a weekend.
So, um, and they have to turn up for every call, whether it's a crash or fire, or an accident, or a false alarm, right? They have to turn up for everyone, so people are putting in a huge amount of time as volunteers, and at the end of the day, I think, what we're seeing nationally is a decline, this is all old hat, right, we know that there's a, a crisis in volunteers. When I'm, like, they're wanting us to give them the stipend to recognize their extensive contribution to the town, and at the end of the day, it's hard to know how to just justify that without having some kind of data, either I'm retroactively giving them a stipend for their performance above and beyond the call of duty last year, because they answered X number of calls and I need that number, or I'm giving them money for some other purpose, right? But there has to be, it has to be clear, like, we have job descriptions, right? If the, if we're paying, if it's fifty bucks, maybe I don't care, but if it's eight thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars, there has to, we have to be amiable for that and be able to be clear. I feel like there are job descriptions for fire chiefs and assistant chiefs and captains, and they're not wrong when they're saying we're headed towards a paid company.
Well, I know, yeah, but, I have two thoughts, one is, I, I don't dispute that. Two is they're there a lot faster than we are, you know, but it's easy to say it's hard to pay for. You know, it's like you're building, you know, a big additional back-to-house, I can tell you that I want everything, and you have to go pay for it, you have to do it. And that's why communication and transparency is so important, so we can understand this, this part. You know, part of the problem we have, or at least I have, I'll say, is we just don't have the data to make sound decisions. And two is, I understand what they're saying, acknowledged, particularly at the captain, assistant, you know, captain, but we're now paying you to manage it, and along comes with that is job description and job responsibility, I don't have a problem saying, I told Sean a year ago, he should have been paid. He's managing too much, he's managing enough, it's, you know, he's not just going out on the calls, but he's gonna figure out where I'm gonna recruit, how am I gonna recruit, what's, you know, this, you know, I, we've been through that a hundred times. But he's gotta warm up to that fact.
So, one thing I was.
It's sort of like the capital, you just don't give them the money and say, oh, okay, that's good.
One thing I was gonna propose, and I don't know if it'll float, right, one possibility was, like, if it's remuneration for calls answered, one option would be to raise the, for calls. One possibility was that if it's remuneration for calls answered, one option would be to raise the per call pay.
Yeah.
Right? If that's what we're talking about. If we're talking about lost work hours, right? Because fair, if you're, if you're answering eighty calls at two hours a call, that's an entire work month. That's a lot of time to get, right?
I, I don't dispute that.
Right, no, I don't either. But then, or, so one way to deal with it, instead of saying retroactive, show me how many calls you answered and I'll give you the stipend, would be to increase the per call pay.
Well, I always felt like of the budget, with the number we have in compensation, is that we need to keep that number in there. And we need to work through what the data says and make an educated decision on how to spend it. I don't think by May first, we can answer people and say, how are we gonna break that down?
You mean, leave the num, the amount there and then we can tweak how?
Yeah, it's sort of like the lease agreement. We're not gonna have a lease agreement by the first week of May. We, we put this in there, but we're not gonna sign a bad deal. It's complex.
Right, but you mean keeping it in where, where it is right now at the one twenty-five, or these?
Yeah, yeah, keep, keep, keep the sum there and say, look, it's complex, you know? Until you go educate yourself, you know, you get a lot of these Monday quarterbacking and that comes with the job. It's just not, it's just not, we, we need data, okay? We can explain, we need data. We went to the Harper system. It doesn't record it like we want. We're reconciling with the information. We wanna make a sound decision because we're gonna live with that decision after we make it.
And, and I'm cool with that. The, the piece that's, the second piece that I'm struggling with is that, so one possibility would be to raise the amount we'll pay per call. The other issue is if it's not the calls, if it's the management, that's a separate issue. And, um, what we could do is say, okay, like this is the description of a fire chief, an assistant fire chief and a captain. Go down this list and say which ones you're crossing off. We're, we're, if we're giving you a stipend, it's gonna be, we are paying you as a part-time, that way we're not paying benefits, a part-time fire chief, assistant chief, captain. And that comes with this stipend in return for fulfilling these duties.
Oh, I, I agree. But I, I have no problem to say that it's gotten so complex that we have to pay the fire department to be managed. It's an unrealistic expectation for someone to manage it and respond to all the calls.
It, it really is.
Okay, I, I don't have a problem saying that. There, I, I've had some.
But then we have to put money in the budget to do that.
Yeah, but I don't think, you know, I feel like the fire department or fire companies come and they want everything for things that didn't happen in the past.
Right.
I, 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 you can't live that way. You don't live that way in the, you know, I had many times in my career, the bank's closed, gotta figure out how to do it. I, I mean, that's what they'd say to me, you know, we'll continue to work with you, but the bank's closed this year, you know? We can only incrementally do so much each year. I, I, I mean, that's a reality. It's, it's a reality. And two is, you gotta remember, you know, we're asking the town to vote on a million fifty thousand dollar fire truck. Well, uh, I, you know, if I had had the fire department or fire company, I would say maybe the PR person. I think they do a lot more, but they don't promote their own, you know, kind of what they're doing.
So.
And I, I, I said that same thing to Sean and they have talked to him, is that? It is, well, not about the PR person, but about the, um, that it's sort of a, um, a step up sort of thing, you know? It's something that it's, it could take three years to get to the place where they wanna get to.
That is not uncommon in.
I know, I know. And that's why, that's why I said, it's like, you know, let's just figure it out and get there to your point. Maybe we look at that, the, the current budget, whatever it is now without the stipends on it and say, this is where we are. Let's talk about it along with the capital stuff and next year it will be more. But I think their concern, his concern, is that there are five or six of them, there's, there's about six of them that respond to the majority of daytime calls. And of those six of them, probably fifty percent of that, so three are anywhere from two to three years. Either hitting the age.
Or Mark may.
Yep, they're either hitting the age or they're at an age where they don't wanna do it.
Yeah.
And so that's his concern.
Well, but that's the whole, I, I don't dispute that, but that's why we need to have them in here about talking about, you know, doing the thing with Otis, you know? You know, start and get some people excited that the select board members want to work through this and wanna do it. We know it's a problem, but you can't come and drop it off, you know, on the.
Your mind of a man, bye.
Bye. You can't do that. But I mean, I, I truly believe that it's all doable if you get the right. I know there's gonna be, goes, and I think it's gonna be more at the fire chief level than it's gonna be on the select board level because, you know, you know, my turk, you know, and I understand that, you know, I've seen consolidations of plants that happen. So.
Well, let's face it, Sandersfield pretty much doesn't have a functional fire chief.
Well, they don't, but I mean, I don't know much about Sandersfield, but.
They don't have the money to front either.
They, they don't have the money or they don't want to do. There's a choice.
My people.
Okay, they made that, you know, that, that's a problem, you know, that, you know.
Yeah, no, I know. I know. And New Marlboro, who I think should be able to do it, just doesn't wanna, like, no, it's our turf, we want it. They're just not, they don't seem to be interested in that kind of, or whatever it is.
Well, that's fine. That, that's fine. Let's not waste our time with them. Santafield, I don't, you know.
So you're thinking we can't do stipends this year?
I, I, I don't know. I, I don't, I, I think there's a, there, we put a set dollar amount in for compensation and we figured out, you know, with the compensation, it's how we break it up.
But like, if we leave the compensation as is now with no, none of the stipend money in there, doing stipends for the people that are answering the daytime calls basically means taking money out of everybody else's pocket. And I, I don't think they're gonna go for that, but at the same time, which I understand, cause you're often people to pay for.
Well, we could, we could take the other way is we could do it incremental on the stipend. We need a job description. They, they need to come up with that, look.
I think we come up with it and we put it down on the table and we say, this is what we've come up with, let's, let's talk. I don't think we're, if we.
No, no. Two is that I've always, no, I don't know. I, I don't know, I did in the past history. I think this is what we're, we may have to say, this is what we're willing to pay this year.
Right. And the, the question, what I'm throwing out there is, what is that number?
What do we have, twenty?
Right now, we got zero.
I know, but we talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
When you say stipend, that's for the officers, right?
Yeah.
So we have money in there for increased the cost for going out on calls and if you're there all night.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, the stipend was what, twenty-five, twenty, ten and ten?
We, at one point we had talked about that. The latest was eight each. We, we've gone through a bunch of different iterations. So it's a question of what we think is reasonable or we can afford it, I guess, not reasonable, we can afford.
More of it is right now, what we can afford.
Yeah, that's.
Um, you know, what do we wanna take on? You know, we're at a six percent increase in the budget now, I think.
It was down to five point four this morning.
You don't see the one of four, no.
I mean, I just, I, I.
I, I didn't look at it.
Yeah, I did.
So, um, I think that.
I, I was mocking with this one, so now I have to put it back to what it was.
But the, the thing about the captains, how much are they really gonna manage? I, I don't know.
And I, I think that I don't know either. What I do know is that, that the captains are the ones showing up from the problem. At, at the end of the day, that's, so then that, so it's five point four eight percent as of this morning. Um, and it, it goes up to about six point two if I put in forty K for stipends as a total. Um, I just was playing with numbers.
I, I mean, I, you know, I could say seventy-five, hundred, captain, he tends to be the assistant, fifteen to the, I mean, it, it, it's, it's a number you have to give. There's no magic formula, but I think they, we can put a number in there with the, you know, idea of the, you know, particularly with this district stuff coming out from kind of us.
I think they're struggling with that as well.
Yeah.
Shaw, Shaw is sort of, he's got kind of three things going on right now in his head, what I can gather. These three things that he's thinking of. You know, one of course is the situation where they're at right now.
For Manning.
For, for Manning and for people, you know, for just the way that the, way the department is, and the fire company is designed with its relationship with the town. Second thing he's kinda got going on is the whole fire district and what does that mean? And it's, it's almost like these are sort of like, I, I kinda put it to him, these are like existential. That these are like real big changes for, for the fire company itself. So he's got, the way things are going right now with his relationship with the, the town. He's also, um, you know, thinking about, um, you know, the fire district and what does that mean? Which is sort of working with Otis to kind of figure things out. And I do, I, you know, I have mentioned to him that, to your point, maybe there's some other people that should kind of be part of that conversation. So everybody kind of understands. And then the third thing is that, you know, and it's just been kind of recent where he's thinking that, you know, maybe the, a, a full-time fire department is what is needed out here in this.
Which, which I think is a subcategory of the district, but.
Yeah, so it's kind of like, where, what, what does that mean? So to him, he's, there's, he's like, when I gather my conversations, is he's sort of struggling with all three of these.
And it's fire EMS when it comes under that one.
Yeah.
Right, including avenue.
It, it gets a little, gets a little difficult. And so he's kind of like looking at these three things and so he's sort of trying to figure that all out. It's, it's a, it's a big, it's a big thing that he's dealing with, you know? And so I don't know. So it's like he said, you know, I spent, you know, thirty hours or whatever, forty hours just trying to think about all the stuff we've done over the past couple of weeks, you know? For just for the fire, fireside.
But is he willing to let people help him?
I think he is if they help him the right way.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, but.
Like, like help him like how? Like, what do you mean?
I mean, okay, he needs help on the business, tracking numbers, data.
Yeah.
Will he let someone help him?
And that's a good question.
I mean, that, my, my feeling is that, you know, you know, that he's always done it, he's always done by, so on. But sort of a, okay, if you're gonna have a partnership, you got, you know, we need to listen to him, he needs to listen to us, he needs to let us help him. Cause we have some expertise he doesn't have. That's not, that isn't a criticism, you know?
I think that's why he's talking, he's, you know, mentioned, you know, that administrator system, someone like that that can help him.
Yeah, but talking about.
You can't do it all yourself anymore, but it's hard to let go of the control.
Acting on it.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
And that's my, he gives, you know, he's got a business, he's got family life, he's got all these things, he's kicked all out, all these weird hours and days and weekends and nights.
But I think, I think the issue though too is that it's like, you know, what, you know, they can't hire somebody right now with the money that they're getting to do it. And, and they can't, and they can't get the money, they, they can't get the money because they haven't hired the person to do it. You know what I mean? So it's like.
Yeah, but I, I would say, based on what I know, their donations, they could hire a part-time person, I would suspect, based on his donations, I'm not.
I think there's a third thing.
Two is that there's some volunteers that he probably could get that could do a lot for him and get it set up and then he could hire.
I think that third part is when you, when you're the, when you're used to being this, I'll call it the self-starter and juggling all the balls and you're also a, a person in, used to being completely in charge. It may be really hard to cross the bridge to, to actually delegate something and do it properly so that it can get done. And that you're satisfied with the result and the person's held accountable. That's a hard thing, right? And I think that we're dealing with, you know, personalities that have difficulty crossing that bridge, cause it's hard to do. You have to be willing to assign the work, be clear about what the work is and trust that the work gets done and go through the time to train the person and double check their work and.
I, I think what you said earlier though is that you're willing to give them sixty thousand dollars, but you need to see something between now and next year. And if we're not seeing something between now and next year, then.
Yeah, I mean, two, yeah, the, the issues you brought up, you know, they're, they're big issues. And if he doesn't give, the problem is he probably can't, doesn't have the time to give different issues the time of thought. You know, cause he's trying to run the day-to-day. Um, you know, he's gonna, he's gonna have to give up something cause the, the district is huge.
Right. He's gonna have it. If he's going that direction, he's gonna have it.
I, I, I mean.
I think it's, I think that's what.
And two, the, the other issue is the reason why we need the transparency in the numbers. Cause if we do it and we're gonna do shared costs, we need to say, here are the numbers, you know? Here's, here are the numbers and, um, you know, we need to share those. Here, here's what it costs to run this firehouse. If we're gonna be the predominant firehouse, you know, this is, you know, we need you to share in this cost.
So, I mean, like, that's really the takeaway message is you have, you have to cross the bridge to be willing to delegate and you have to find someone to delegate.
Yeah, he's really gotta, he, he's, it's gonna get him out of his comfort zone.
I get that. I do. And then you, you may, you know, because like I said, it involves figuring out what the pieces you're delegating, clear, explaining it completely to the person and then trusting that the work gets done and having the time to check that the work was done properly so that you can then trust them going forward. But there's no choice. You have to do it some way. Um, okay. So I, I put forty K in there and I'll bring that for next Tuesday and that brings us to six point two seven percent.
And that was for those.
Did you put in the change to rent the sixty? I, you know, and two, he really needs, we need their help in selling this to the public.
At sixty, it brings us to six point four six. Yeah, we do. And I'm, I'm gonna write something for the, for the Monterey News. I wrote up something on the, so far on the why the shift program? Because I feel like I have to be able to answer all the questions.
About that too today.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, but Diane doesn't understand.
No, she doesn't.
I was like, oh my God, you know?
I know.
We're calling the god-complacent tonic to go pick up the chariot leader to our house in forty-five minutes. That's what you want to say. You know, it, it's a public safety. It's like, what kind of, what do you wanna do? Either that or tell everybody to put sprinkler systems in there.
This is Rhode Island.
Is that what Rhode Island told them?
Well, no, after, after the, uh, the station light co-fire, they had down there, they told all the businesses, you had to, um, you had to put in, you had, no matter what, even if you're a grandfather from before, you have to put in fire systems, you have to put in sprinklers. All the businesses. Wow.
I think some counties now have it on new homes yet.
God, I would not want a sprinkler system in my house.
Well, yeah, I tell you, I've had some lots with sprinkler system, I'm told it went early two thousand.
One accidental.
Well, you know, what happened was, you know, we did a, well, it was a system that was empty and it filled up, you know, it had to call. Well, we do, you do test runs on it, right? Depression, fucking pipes are bad to begin with, fucking noise.
Everything.
Yeah, china steel. Cost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this.
Where's the, where the manufacturer's online? China, forget it. Don't get anyone China. All right. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll get there. I just hope Sean wants to suffer. I make a German food, a German meal.
Second?
Yes.
Yes. Um, I will, I will try to write up the minutes. What time is it? I don't even know. I just had Mike on three thirty-one.